Good afternoon, board members, administration, faculty, staff, and visitors. The time is 6:00 PM on this, the first day of June 2023, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. If you can all please stand, Mr. Delgado, you can say the prayer, and Ms. Lando, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and their confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Ms. Cleven Ramos, could you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J.D. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia, absent. Cindy Liendo?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr., absent. Esteban Rangel, absent. Karina Elizondo?
Present.
Tita Cantubella? You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. That the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Next item we have is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of April 27, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by, this is Jackie Levin Ramos, and a second by J.D. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have, public testimony. Do we have anybody sign in?
There are none.
There are none. Thank you. Next item we have is recognition introductions of personnel and new personnel actions for the month. First one is 5A, Spring Job Fair Report. Ms. Denise Flores?
Good evening, board members. Thank you. Good evening, board members. Board President Cepeda, President Ramirez, Vice President Rodriguez Tijerina, and administration. For the record, my name is Denise Flores, the Workforce Development Center Director. Today, I would like to provide an update on our previous event, the Spring Job Fair. This event was a collaboration between Laredo College Workforce Solutions for South Texas and the City of Laredo Economic Development Department as our goal was to provide graduates, alumni, and community members an opportunity to seek new careers. This event was held on Thursday, May 18, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Laredo College Kazon Center, and our event was a success. We registered over 60 employers, community resources, and LC booths. Close to 500 registered attendees took part of the event, which include Laredo Care students, LC graduates, enrolled students, and community guests, 155 potential hires, and 12 hires on the spot at that date. I would like to personally thank the City of Laredo Economic Development Department, Ms. Miriam Castillo, and Mr. Arnold Lozano, the staff of the Workforce Solutions for South Texas, led by Mr. Rogelio Trevino and Ms. Patricia Barrera, the LC marketing team, who provided an excellent marketing campaign, and last but not least, the Workforce Development Center, Mr. Javier Gutierrez and Salvador Ciarapa, and our student intern who helped us out, Ms. Yanni Husky, the staff and volunteers who took part of this as well. This event was exemplified, was the exemplified a version of what community and partnership should be. Our next event is scheduled for early fall at the south campus, so we look forward to that event.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Flores, for that outstanding report. I know that you all had a very good turnout, the different things that were posted on Facebook and all the other media. Thank you for everything that you all did for us.
And I appreciate the support from Laredo College and our partners. You know, this successful event wouldn't be without everybody who was, took part of it, so I thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is 5B, recognition of accreditation. Commission for Education in Nursing Granting Continued Accreditation to our Associate Degree in Nursing Program, Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina, Dr. Diane Miller.
Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina, Provo's Vice President of Academic Affairs, and?
Dr. Diana Miller, Dean of Health Sciences.
So we're here to present that we just got great notification from the Accreditation Commission for Education in Nursing, which is better known as A-C-E-N, and I'm very proud that our Associate Degree in Nursing Program just got accredited for up until fall of 2030, and I know they're very humble about it, but that's why I wanted to present this because there's different categories, and we got the highest accreditation that we, any program can. And it's all through the work of Dr. Miller and Dr. Michael Martinez, if he can also stand and be recognized as our program director. Some of the things that were highlighted as strengths that I would like to read is the support staff assisting with retention and student success is a strength for the nursing program. And I want to highlight, if any of our faculty is here, to stand up because they work Saturdays, Sundays, they have individual retention plans for our nursing students, which, you know, for the sixth year in a row, we've been ranked as number one nursing program in the state of Texas, and it's through their efforts. They're here night and day. And so it's such a proud moment to recognize them. The other thing was that they're committed to student success by contributing the three hours per week to support student learning through iPass and class. And then we were one of the five programs of institutions of higher ed to be awarded, funding through the TikTok Health Heroes. So if you recall, the $1 million that we got, not everybody was able to get. So through their hard work, you know, we got accredited again, and I don't know, Dr. Miller?
No, we do appreciate the support from the board and the president and the administration in helping our program be successful because you guys support us and help us to be there. Their faculty and Dr. Michael Martinez and us are able to be there to help the students in all these different ways and facets. And you guys all know, we love our mannequins and our building. And so that has been a big help in order, these students, they come out, they know what they're to do, they are able to treat the patients with courtesy kindness as well as to know the proper processes and procedures to go through, which is what we want, safe practitioners in Laredo for each of us as we go through those. Thank you again for all you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And Dr. Miller? I had to trick Dr. Miller in this other recognition, and I'm going to be strong here. Dr. Miller is retiring from Laredo College, and so it's, it's hard for me. I've worked with Dr. Miller for many years. She's been my boss, my mentor, our advisor. She's been a strong pillar to the college. And, you know, I don't look at it as we're replacing because she's one of a kind, and she knows she has a home here for us. And if Dr. Ramirez can help present this beautiful plaque. Do you want to read what?
Yeah.
It says, "With sincere gratitude, Dr. Diana L. Miller, Laredo College, let us never consider ourselves finished nurses. We must be learning all of our lives," and that's a quote by Florence Nightingale. "Congratulations on your retirement 2023. In recognition of your 32 years of commitment and dedication to Laredo College and the Health Sciences Division, we will forever be grateful for your inspiration, inspiring motivation, guidance, and legacy. Your leadership led LC to be ranked the number one ADN program in Texas for six consecutive years. We wish you much success in your retirement. We know you deserve it. Know that you will always be missed here and that our health science program is what it is because you built it from the ground up. And so we thank you and, and we wish you the, the best health and happiness in your retirement. And I know that your husband is very happy that you're going home." Yes, I know he's here. And so we thank you too, sir, because her dedication and service was your dedication and service. And so it was a family commitment. We know that, and we're eternally grateful to you. And so we'd like to present you with this little token of appreciation, and, and we'd like to take a photograph with you. And if your faculty who's here will join us, I think it would be fitting as well.
I just want to say congratulations, but most importantly, I want to express my gratitude. Thank you for working so hard to accomplish excellence. I know it's easier said than done achieving and aiming to be excellent. It's, it's very hard. There's a lot of things that are unseen or, or unsaid, and just getting to be number one every single time is just extraordinary. And I always say it's a reflection of your hard work as a, as a mentor and also with your amazing team where you're going to be greatly missed. And hopefully, we can maintain those standards and that everybody continues to achieve excellence. And congratulations. Enjoy your retirement, and may God bless you and your family.
Here recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Dr. Miller, I just want to say, are you? There you are. Thought you left already. Saw your husband with a party hat when I first got here. But in, in all sincerity, just as, you know, several comments that have been made by my colleagues, and of course, from Dr. Mireta and Dr. Maricela, I think most importantly, I just want to thank you for building the foundation that you did. I think when I first arrived in 2019, and even before that, I think when we first met in 2015, 2016, I think I kind of called you a little bit more than I should have in asking you exactly what was going on and how things were working. And I think I most definitely appreciate that because it helped me, you know, kind of jump into the role that I, that I decided to jump into in 2019. And most importantly, with regards to that foundation that you've built in educating and leading the people that, you know, were by your side and currently in the leadership positions of the nursing program, that, you know, your efforts will continue to reflect as, as years continues to go by. And for that, you know, from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure everyone else is, thank you so much for, for your commitment to, to the Laredo College family and wish you the best in your retirement and hope you get to relax and pop your feet up and all that good stuff. So thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Dr. Miller, thank you so much for all, for everything that you've done for their college, but most importantly, for making me feel like I'm part of the team. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. You did a wonderful job. And whatever you need, we're here to help you do whatever you need. Thank you.
Anyone else? Congratulations, Dr. Miller. I really enjoyed working with you and, and your team at the south campus. This, this will be your second home. Please come and visit, come and visit us. We'll still be here and enjoy your retirement. Thank you. Next item is 5C, recognition of Laredo College Emergency Medical Technician Students, Mr. Jorge J.D. Delgado and Mr. Herbert Serna.
For the record, my name is Herbert Serna. He is program lab coordinator. Good evening, Board President, Trustees, and this from you, administrators. As you know, this past, past month, we had a big graduation for the whole allied department. These two gentlemen next to me, they were staffing the ambulance at the time, so they didn't have the opportunity to go through the whole recognition. So we're just having this moment just to recognize them for their, you know, for their achievement that they, you know, for passing their, they passed their advanced DMT students. Next to me is Israel Molina, and I'm sorry, Valentin Gonzalez. So the two gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Here recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
I think there's a rest of the story here. And so if I may, gentlemen, I know that they're, while you're getting pinned.
Yes.
There, there, there is a, the rest of the story is, as you all are aware, and as our, our, our community of learners here at Laredo College are aware, Judge Mercurio Martinez suffered an accident and was severely burned and, and was having to, was, was transported on that day to San Antonio to Brooks Army Medical Center. And it was these two gentlemen who, who stepped up to the plate, staffed the ambulance, and took him to Brooks Army Medical Center immediately for care. And he called me a little while ago, wanting me to share his sentiments with you, his gratitude, his thanks, and I know that they tried to look for you all after things got settled at the hospital and you all had already finished your paperwork and, and headed back. And so from the bottom of their heart, the entire families, they want to thank you gentlemen for doing what you have been called to do, to care for others and to take care of our community. And, and this really hit home for us. And so we have a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the Board of Trustees and myself. And so we'd also like to take a picture with you because you were there for your pictures, for your pinning and your graduation, so.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is 5D, Texas Workforce Commission Jobs and Education for Texans Jet Grant for Specialized Equipment, Ms. Brenda Martinez.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Ramirez, Dr. Rodriguez Tijerina, and colleagues. I'm Brenda Martinez, Director of Continued Education Department. A couple of months ago, I had the opportunity to report to you on the jobs on education for Texas grant provided by the Texas Workforce Commission to Laredo College and specifically to our department. The grant award is for $336,000 to acquire three state-of-the-art truck driving simulators. With this equipment, we will enhance and integrate simulator-based driving training into the professional truck, truck driving program. And we will also provide professional training to the truck driving industry throughout the region. And now, I'm here to, I'm very pleased to report the acquisition of these truck driving simulators. The equipment, it is located at the south campus where our CDL program resides. On the day of the equipment installation and training, we had very special guest test drive the simulators, who provided excellent feedback on the experience of driving a simulated commercial truck. So it's here. They're finally here. The equipment is great. I had also the opportunity to test drive it. It's, it's very exciting. And we want to thank you, all of you, for your continued support to our program, to the Continued Education Department, of course, the students. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and congratulations on that grant. So I see Doc, Dr. Ramirez, do you have anything to say in your test driving there?
Needless to say, I will not be changing careers. It, it's a lot harder than it looks and in a whole new respect for, for those who drive trucks and, and, and the work that they do. It, it really is difficult to maneuver on the simulator. Says I was on one end and I was on the other, Mr. Vela, and I, and I was screaming because I kept hitting the, the guardrails. Says I was on one end and I was on the other, Mr. Villa, and I was screaming because I kept hitting the guardrails and it was crazy. And so it's, it's a lot harder than one thinks. The simulators do provide all weather terrain, weights, fluids, dry goods. It's really incredible. And so while the student is sitting on the, in the simulator, the faculty member is actually changing the terrain, changing the weather, changing the the expectations of the driver right as it's happening. And so it's in real time and it really is an exceptional program. Hopefully, we'll be able to add to the industry an additional 200 drivers a year with those three simulators. And we're, we're getting calls from, from the industry constantly for drivers. And as they graduate, they, they're employed without a doubt. And so we want to thank the Texas Workforce Commission and the team for applying for the grant. It was a huge grant. Hopefully, there's still room in that, in that space where we put those three simulators. There's room for probably two more, I think. We probably could add two or three more. And if we could, maybe next year we'll reapply and continue to grow that program. It is desperately needed. So thank you all for the support and to the team for writing the grant.
Thank you. Next item I have is five E update on Citizenship and Integration Grant Program, Mr. Eduardo Martinez.
Good evening, Madam President, Laredo Board of Trustees and Administrators. I'm Eduardo Martinez, the Instructional and Professional Development Coordinator for the Adult Education Leadership Department, and I'm also the Program Manager slash Director for the USCIS Citizenship Program. I'm here today to provide all of you with an update, update of the USCIS Citizenship Program at the Laredo College. As all of you know, approximately two years ago, Laredo College decided to apply for the USCIS Citizenship Grant, and we were fortunate enough to be one of 32 programs in the country to receive the grant. The two-year grant began in October 2021 and will end September the 30th, 2023. But we are planning, if permitted, to apply for the grant for another two years. The program integrates ESL instruction with civic citizenship prep activities in order for students to take the citizenship exam. The demand for the program has been overwhelming. Due to the fact that Laredo College was the first institution to be awarded this grant that is situated on the border. And more importantly, our success rate began, the word of mouth started running around Laredo, how good the program was. The program, and this is the perfect segue to what I'm going to be talking about, the success of the program. The program has served 281 individuals as of today, because we do have a couple more months to go, 281 individuals. We've had 112 students take the exam. Out of the 112 students, we have 105 that have passed. That is a 93.7% pass rate, which is one of the highest in the nation. In fact, USCIS officers in San Antonio have mentioned to our students that they have never seen individuals so well prepared to take the exam. Also, our retention rate for our classes is the highest in the nation. I owe this great success to our administration, Dean Cortez. The curriculum, which was written by Mr. JJ Garcia, Mrs. Cecilia Dabdo and myself, which we have about, I hate to say this, over 100 years of experience combined. And our instructors, and at this time I have some instructors here that I want to acknowledge. We have Ms. Yolanda Tijerina, if you could please stand up. Arla Sanchez. Mr. JJ Garcia. Mr. Mario Martinez. Thank you. And unfortunately, Cecilia Dabdo is not here. Yay. And last but not least, our students, our students are fantastic, second to none. And we have a small portion of those 105 students here because all of them wanted to come and tell them, no, 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 we'll divide it up. So as you can see, it's a packed house. So at this time, I would want our newly citizens to stand up. And we do have some more in the conference room outside. This concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, and congratulations to everyone. That is outstanding.
Can we try, can we try to take a photograph? Sure. Yes, let's try to take a photograph. Yes.
Yes, we probably have to do it in the hallway because there's some others on the.
Do you have a lot more outside? And the other room?
Right there in that little cutting.
Do you mind, do you, does, do you all mind doing, taking like a little recess to do that? No, I think we should, don't you think?
Yes.
Is that okay? All right. Yes. Okay. Don't want to get into trouble here. So will all the new citizens join us outside on the steps, please?
Chair recognizes Mr. Wanghe joining us.
Thank you, Madam President.
You missed all the pictures.
I'm okay. He's all pictured out.
I'm going to continue. The next item is five F Laredo College 2023, 2024 Texas Success Center Leadership Academy Selection, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so we received a an opportunity from the Texas Association of Community Colleges for its inaugural, inaugural Leadership Academy of Mid-Level Administrators. And we nominated two people and we're happy to announce to you all today and to the public that both of our nominees were selected. So we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Dr. Alberto Hernandez, Dean of Workforce Education, and Ms. Andrea Lopez, the Associate Vice President for Student Success and Support Services, because both of them got selected for, for the academy, which is a year-long academy that will help to enhance their leadership and management skills in higher education specifically. And so we're very proud that they were both selected and we'd like to recognize them today with a certificate. And and we're just so excited for both of them because this is, they're really going to set an incredible opportunity. Some of the training that they're going to receive is coming from ACE. And so for us, that's a huge opportunity because eventually we'd like to be ACE recognized. And so no pressure, but, but certainly the, the, this, this opportunity was great. And, and when I discussed it with the leadership team, we agreed that both of them would, would represent our institution well and would be great to come back and train other mid-level managers as well. So.
Congratulations. Thank you again, and congratulations to both. The next item is five G Moody Foundation Grant, Mr. Gabriel Lozano.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Gabriel Lozano, Director of Grants for the record. It is my pleasure to present a new grant that we just got, actually a few weeks ago. And it's from the Moody Foundation, which is located in Galveston, Texas. And it's for $250,000 to help us with our renovation of Arichiga Hall. So we're very excited about that. Because it's a very expensive endeavor and we need all the help we can get to, to get to our budget, you know, to meet our budget. So. And I just wanted to point out one quick thing about this grant. Excuse me, in 2023, the Moody Foundation has awarded so far 88 grants all over the state of Texas. Our grant was the fourth largest awarded by them so far this year. So we're very proud of that as well.
Great, congratulations.
Madam Chair, if I may, just.
Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you. Just, just to say that the grant was when we, when it was originally written, was going to be a request for $50,000. And then, of course, you know, we were, we brainstormed about it a little bit and said, well, why not ask for more, much more and see what happens, right? And so of those four top grants, one of them is their own Moody Foundation Scholars, which is for $3 million. Ours was 250,000 and then the ones right above us, one was for 300,000 and the other was for, I think, two, three 50, right, Gabriel? About 350. So everybody else received 50,000, 60,000, 70,000. And so we're, we're really proud of this grant. As you all know, we're in the process of waiting for the documents for our final plans on the renovation of Arichiga Hall. And this is certainly going to be a big, big help in the renovation of that facility, which is our only national landmark on this campus. And so we're, we're real excited about the future of that building as we turn that into our advising center on this campus. And so we're, we're really looking forward to it. And thanks to Gabriel and for writing the grant and doing it so quickly because it was one of those, it's due Friday, right? Like everything else.
Well, thank you and congratulations again. Five H is Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Notice of Grant Award of Open Education Resources Grant, Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez.
Good evening, Board Members, Madam President, Provost Tijerina. My name is Elizabeth Rodriguez. I'm the Dean of Academic Innovation and Technology, and I'm here with my team who put together this grant. We wanted to let you know that we received an OER grant for $25,000 for Texas from TETCB. And so just for the sake of yeah. Just for the sake of everybody, I kind of wanted to just explain a little bit about OER and what it is. And so OER are open education. And so OER are open educational resources that are freely accessible and openly licensed educational materials that can be used for teaching, learning, and research. These resources include a wide range of materials such as textbooks, lecture notes, course modules, multimedia content assessments, and more. The defining characteristic of OER is that they are openly licensed, allowing users to legally and freely access, adapt, modify, and share the materials. OER promotes equitable access to high-quality educational resources. It reduces financial barriers for students, encourages collaboration among educators, and enables the customization of learning materials to meet specific instructional needs. When we heard about this grant, I quickly put together an OER task for which are the folks who are here standing alongside me. I'm chairing the the task for. Dr. Martinez is going to serve as her assessment and data analyst because this is a two-year grant, and so we'll need to report the successes and the failures of the grant, but we're hoping it'll all be success. We have Professor Mancing Honey, he's going to be our faculty. He's going to be redesigning his Government 2305 course using OER material. Ms. Reed is going to be our e-learning support representative. Ms. Rodriguez is going to be our library support representative, and then we have Ms. Gonzalez, our instructional designer, because as we redesign this course, we need all of those folks who are going to be part of of helping with the with the redevelopment of this particular course. So what are the benefits to our students? Open educational resources offer significant cost savings to students compared to traditional textbooks and course materials. By leveraging OER, educational institutions can contribute to reducing the financial barriers that students face when pursuing their education. The cost savings associated with OER can alleviate some of the financial burdens on students, making education more accessible, affordable, and affordable for a wider range of learners. And so we've been preparing. We didn't just decide today, oh, you know, we want to do what we are. Actually, I've been working with this group of folks for quite some time. We did a leadership program with an organization that are leaders in open educational resources. And we developed a preliminary strategic plan. And so we've been planning this for for quite some time. When the opportunity came to apply for this grant, we were at a really good position. We understood OER. We had a team together and we had buy-in as well from some of our faculty. So looking at, to give you an idea of what the cost savings would look like, and this is just for one course. We pulled out the data for our Fall 2023 Semester for Government 2305. And so currently for our current our Laredo College students, not including our duos, we have seven sections, 30 students per section, approximately $40 per textbook. So the cost savings for those sections would be for our students would be $8,400. As we look at our school district, so right now, we have 24 sections of Government 2305, approximately 30 students per section, $40 per textbook. And so the total cost savings that we're looking at for our school district partners would be 28,800. And so this is just for one course. We this is this would not be the first course, OER course at Laredo College. I'm proud to announce that. We've had faculty adopt OER for the past several semesters. The majority of our English courses are currently OER. Throughout the summer, our speech faculty are working to to get their courses OER as well. We have pilots going on in the map department, pilots going on in our history. But this is going to give us an opportunity to provide actual data, whether whether this is something good for the and I from from research that we've done, you know, this is something that is going to be beneficial to our college and most especially to our students. It also gives an opportunity to our faculty to take ownership of their curriculum, right? The the way this is going to work, once the course is redesigned, we have folks that are going to internal folks that are going to review the course. We have students that we're going to select to review the course as well. Because the student the student voice is very important as we move towards OER. And then we have an external review that is going to be reviewing the course. And so all of this is, once it's done, and once it's vetted and peer reviewed, this this course is going to be housed in the repository that THCB has for open educational resources for other institutions to be able to use courses that Laredo College develops. That's all I have. Any questions?
Awesome. The Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Well, congratulations, but I wanted to thank you for doing this, for promoting this type of initiatives because part of our retention ideal is to be able to offer those services to students because paying for tuition alone is not enough. And I recently was going through, I saw an online article and I thought it was funny, but it's not. And he was just making reference how an individual that was stealing from their local bookstore, I believe he sold like $25,000. And as part of the comments was like, I hope that person returns those two books. Making and it's true, textbooks are extremely expensive, and I want to thank you all on behalf of the students and as a former student who's still paying for student loans, thank you for
Thank you. Thank you. We're very, very excited. And I have a strong group working alongside me. So we're excited to bring back the results when we have, once we have that data.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item I have is five I Introduction of Personnel Personnel Actions. Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair and Trustees. I'm very proud to introduce some of our newest employees and and so if you're here, when I introduce you, if you'll please stand to be recognized. And then we'll take a photograph at the end. Workforce Development Coordinator, Eric Carrion. Daniela Nava Cortez, Financial Aid Technician One, she's been new hired. A Nursing Laboratory Assistant and Clinical Skills Instructor for Vocational Nursing, Jose G. Peralles. Patrol Officer, Florencio H. Calderon. Journeyman Plumber, Mr. Oscar Salas. I think he left. Technology Support Manager, Ermelinda Gámez Johnson. Workforce Development Coordinator, Daisy Olivas. And a promotion is our Social Science Department Chair, Mr. Park Cash Mangsahani. Workforce Development Specialist, also a promotion, Ms. Melissa Santos Dominguez. And new hire Patrol Officer, Mr. Ramones Mendez. And if you all will join us, we'd like to take a photograph with all of our new employees and our promoted employees, please.
That's to see that before and after.
That's a scary thought.
Congratulations to everybody and welcome to the Laredo College family. Next item we have is number six Faculty Senate Report. Mr. Cash Masahani and Ms. Juliana Kelly.
Good evening. For the record, for Cash Manson Honey, I'll be delivering today's Faculty Senate Report and also introducing our next president for this evening as well momentarily. So this will be my last Faculty Senate Report and the first update from our new president this evening. So let me just make my section pretty short so that I can move to introduce the new president. I just wanted to bring up a few items that the Faculty Senate had been looking at. And of course, we had been monitoring the developments out of the Texas Legislature with regards to tenure. And we are happy to see that the Senate's bill did not make it through the House. Instead, what they sent the governor on tenure is a bill that allows, from what I understand, universities and institutions to have more options when it comes to if necessary, removing somebody from that position. That's not necessarily in law yet, but it's some of the options that we're seeing. So we're happy to see that the House is considered defending or keeping tenure in some format. Of course, the final developments remain to be seen and and but again, we saw that and we thought it was interesting. I also want to mention very quickly because it's a development from the last report, but having met with our president of the college, Dr. Minita Ramirez, we were able to establish some funding for the next leg of what we've been talking about for many years, which is the Memorial Brick Project. So I'm glad that the Faculty Senate will have the opportunity to continue working on the next phase. This involves money because there are bricks that are obtained from the cemetery folks that then have names of faculty who have retired in the past and then installing those bricks outside the Memorial Hall, which of course, hopefully, the goal originally was to then have some kind of event where we can commemorate those who have come to serve or come to pass at our institution. And so that's the hope that there's there. Again, very quickly, this is my last Faculty Senate Report. I'd just like to say very quickly here that I'm happy that in the four years that I've had the opportunity to come to this podium, that we've used this podium as a Faculty Senate to advocate for all of the employees at this college. We've used this podium every single time to advocate for our students, our staff, and our faculty. And when we ask for something to ensure that everyone is included in those requests, and I'm proud of that, and I hope that that legacy will continue that when you have the power of a podium, that you use it for everyone and for everyone's benefit and everyone's as a stakeholder. So in the time that I have served as Faculty Senate President, we've worked together with the administration and the board to defend tenure, ensure salary increases for all of our employees, work with the board to continue affording our existing benefit packages. In fact, one year, we worked together as an institution to offer our employees a 5% salary increase, and this was no less, as you remember, during the pandemic. So again, I'm proud of the work that we have done together. When institutions were furloughing their employees, we, on the other hand, worked together to find a way to ensure that our faculty not only would continue working, not be laid off, but get a 5% increase. So I'm proud of those efforts. I'm proud of the 3% salary increase that we achieved previously. The $5,000 bonus that Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina worked on as well with the State of Texas through the money and the Board of Trustees, the President of the College, to obtain those fundings as well as improving our Faculty Senate policies and procedures like filling vacant positions, bringing in decorum and a sense of order to our Faculty Senate meetings. Filling all of our vacant positions. When I took over this position, we had vacant positions in every area. Towards the end, we had no vacancies, and we had participation from all areas of the college, health sciences, workforce, and academics. And I'm very proud of the work we did to do that. We also participated for the first time ever in the Fun Fest, inspired by the president's mission to continue to ignite excellence and to move beyond that. So our first booth at the Fun Fest, while it may sound small, it's those little contributions that add up to the mission because again, you can ask, you can ask, but you also have to give. It's not enough to ask, you have to give. Working on several presidential search committees, I'm very proud of our last one, obviously, and we've worked together on those presidential search committees, and it's gotten given us the opportunity to know each other better, to talk on the phone when something wasn't working with something and we needed to figure it out, or in other committees that we've served together. So what an amazing opportunity that was to work with you all as board members. I've served on the Senate for 12 years, originally as a concerned Faculty Senate Member right across over there at the Laird Hall, which is where the board meetings used to be. Then eventually, as a Faculty Senator-at-Large, a Vice President, and then for four years as a President of the Faculty Senate. So I'm proud of the work that our team did during those four years and really even over those 12 years to work together to achieve many of these things. I know in the last years, our focus is after pandemic went into other areas, but our hope is that we can continue on that trail of success to continue reaching other successes. As I wrap up today's board report, I'd like to hopefully ask the board to consider, as it looks at the budget this year and continues to look at the budget in future years, to consider whatever it can do, as it always has done, to ensure some form of increase, if possible, when possible, is afforded during that process. I know that the board has done everything that it can, that it can, and so does the administration, and I hope that we can continue to do that. That is an ask that I have. I do want to take a moment to just send well wishes on behalf of the Faculty Senate to Judge Martinez and his family. We pray for his continued recovery and hope that he will be joining the board shortly. We also want to take a moment to wish Dean Miller success in the next leg of her journey. Dr. Miller was the first person to interview me at the secondary level as Provost at the time, when she was Vice President of Instruction. And I still remember that conversation that occurred in Laird Hall as well. So the last item I have brings into discussion the election for the Faculty Senate. It was the pending item from our last board report. We were seeking to find a new president, a new Board Secretary or Faculty Senate Secretary, along with three Senators-at-Large. Serving in those positions originally were myself as President of the Faculty Assembly or Senate, Professor of Government and Reading, Ms. Laticia Spillane, as well as three Senators-at-Large, like, for example, Dr. Joseph Crabtree, Mrs. Maritza Morris of History, and so forth. And so now we have concluded the elections. And I would like to announce the results of that election. So for Senators-at-Large, our new Senators will be Mr. Jacob Rulups, who is a nominee from the library, who's also a faculty member, Mr. Rafael Garcia, who's a government of his professor of government, or yes, professor of government from the Social Sciences Department. And from the Mathematics Department, we have Mr. Miguel Contreras, who's also a new Senator in the Faculty Senate. And we have two executive-level officers in the Faculty Senate. And our new secretary is going to be from the Natural Sciences Department, Mr. Brian de Jesus. And finally, and without further ado, the most important announcement I have today is the announcement of our new President of the Faculty Senate, which will in fact be a professor, Associate Professor of Biology, a member of the Natural Sciences Department, a colleague, a friend, an outstanding member of the faculty, a contributor to the entire city and community through her and her husband's conservation efforts and discovery efforts and sense of adventure, none other than Mrs. Juliana Kelly, who I would like to introduce as the next Faculty Senate President.
Thank you, Cash, for that introduction. Good evening, board members, President Ramirez, Dr. Marisela Tijerina, Rodriguez Tijerina Administration, and everyone else. Juliana Kelly, for the record, spelled K.E.L.L.E.Y. A lot of people miss spell my last name. A lot of people misspell my last name, but please feel free to call me Julie. I go by Julie. It is an honor here, standing before you as a newly elected president of the Faculty Senate. I want to thank my fellow colleagues for nominating me and electing me and for being confident that I can hold this position. I also look forward to working with the board, the president's office, with the student population and of course, the esteemed professors. They come here every day, rain or shine, to teach our students of Laredo and surrounding areas. So I really look forward to working with our faculty. I'm excited and I'm humbled to, for this new adventure. So once again, I'm Julie and if you guys have any questions, I am open for your questions.
Anyone? Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Congratulations. Congrat-- we're gonna miss Cash a lot, but I'm sure you're gonna do an amazing job. And if I'm not mistaken, you'll be the first female?
No, no. Okay. No, I think there has been previous female presidents.
Good luck in everything that you're doing. You have ours.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Cash. Thank you so much for the work that you did. I appreciate it. On behalf of the board and the college president, you did a great job and we're very proud of the work that you did. Congratulations. Welcome. Cash was a great person to be able to talk to whenever issues arise or anything like that or whenever he wanted to communicate things with us. I hope we have that same dialogue with you. And please feel free to also, you know, if you want to give us a call, you could ask for Elizabeth for my cell phone number and I'll be more than happy if she could give it to you. And then just feel free to text me or whatever.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. I know I have a wonderful support and he will be still my guide for this year. So I look forward to it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. So.
No, sir.
I know.
You have a different capacity.
Congratulations, Mrs. Kelly. We look forward to working with you. I know you'll be coming to report on a monthly basis to us, so we look forward to that. Cash, I know you'll be around. You're not going anywhere, but thank you for everything that you did. You're here month after month, reporting to us everything that was happening with the Faculty Senate. So we appreciate everything you've done for our college. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And welcome. Next item is number seven, Discussion and Possible Action. We have 7/8, April 2023, Financial Report, Mr. Cesar Vela.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Ramirez, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration for the Record. Included in your board package, you should have received a copy of the financial report for the month of April. And I'll begin the report with going over the general operating revenues. As of April 30th, 2023, our revenue stands at $66,4,644 out of a budget of $66,290,455. That's 99.6% of our budget. Three items to report. The first is although we do have a 99.6% of our budget already recorded as in the revenue line items, we are pending to transfer out $6.5 million for the maintenance and revenue bond payments. We are expecting to collect the $4.2 million that are pending to be received from the state. The two line items that we're currently looking at and we are monitoring for this last four months of operations is obviously the tuition line item. We do have a balance of $2,300, I'm sorry, $233,287 still. We've only collected 70% of the budget amount. We do have summer one and summer two, as well as the May semester that are still pending to be recorded in the financial report. And those will be coming in for the month of May and June. Even though we do have that balance of $2 million, we have already surpassed our projected revenue in the fees. We had projected that we were going to collect $5.1 million. We're at $6.3 million. So that's 1.2 million. Again, if we do encounter any shortfalls in our projections for the tuition, those most likely will be made up by the fee revenue. And then the next item is on the tax collections. Currently, right now, we've collected $40,306,572. That's 95.3%. We're currently 1% behind our projected revenue. We do have four months in the fiscal year, so we'll be monitoring those collections. Again, our projected revenue of $42.3 million is based on 99% collection rate or tax levy. And as we had mentioned in the past meetings, we do have already collected 1.6 million in the interest revenue. Again, that's because interest rates have been going up. So when we budgeted last year, we had, being conservative, we had budgeted $300,000 only. So, so again, we're already 1.3 million over our protected revenue there. Any questions on the revenues? As far as expenses, we, through the month of April, our expenses are $38,330,449. That's 57.82% of our budgeted expenditures. There are no variances right now to report. At this point, last year, our expenses were at 58.94% of our budget. So again, we are pretty much in line where we're supposed to be at this point in time. Again, no major variances to report as far as expenditures. And as we're working to close out the fiscal year, we are already monitoring and projecting that we will be having savings at the end of the year. As far as the other funds, the Import-Export Center, for the year, the revenue stands at $122,077. That's 49.9% of our budgeted or predicted budget. For expenses, we have $105,262 or 43% of our budget for a net increase to the fund balance of $16,815. For auxiliary services, revenues are at $1,304,974. That represents 91.5%. And this is revenue coming from the Student Services line item, from residential revenue, as well as the the revenue that is recorded as part of the rental agreement for the clinic. So again, so far, right now, we are at 91.5% of our budget. The student activity fee includes both the fall and spring semester. So again, it's still not including the summer one and summer two revenues. Expenses are at $598,119 or 42%. So right now, as of April 30th, we have a net increase to the fund balance of $706,855. Again, we have four months of operations still pending. As far as restricted funds, revenues of $22.3 million, expenses of $22.3 million. We do have about 80%, 88% of that is coming from federal funds. That totals $19.6 million. $16.3 million of it is the Pell Grant revenue for the year and approximately $1.5 million is attributed to her funding. And so the $1.5 million that we recorded this year, approximately about $1.2 was for the meal plans. And we are happy to report that yesterday, we received confirmation from the Department of Ed. They have approved our no-cost extension through 2024. So we will be having the opportunity to offer the meal plan for not just the summer session, but both fall and spring semesters of this coming year.
Great news.
So again, we do have approximately about $908,000 that are still available. And we're also pending to account for the money that was not used for the spring semester, which will be added back into the pool. So any student right now that has registered for summer session, one full-time, both here at the Fort McIntosh and the South Campus, will be able to use the funds that they had received in the spring semester for the meal plans.
That's great.
Facilities Master Plan Phase 3. For the year, we began with a balance of $17,498,900. We have interest revenue that is added back to the Facilities Master Plan of $354,153. We do have the contribution of $5 million that is going for the MFA project, expenditures of $7,267,878 for the year, for a net decrease of $960,550. So as of April 30th, we have $16,438,350 in the Facilities Master Plan Phase 3. We are pretty much, have already allocated all the funds. We are working on some projects to finalize this phase of the Facilities Master Plan. As I mentioned, for tax collections, as of April 30th, out of a tax levy of $42,728,810, we have collected $40,306,572. That represents 94.33% of the tax levy. At this point, last year, we were at 95.34%. So again, we are a little bit behind compared to last year. We do have four months still, or well, as of the date of the report, five months still to record. And we are hoping that we will pick up the percent that we're behind in the last five months. The monthly investment report, and this is as of March 31st, 2023. Total investments and deposits totaled $136,905,305. As I mentioned, as you can see, interest rates keep, continue to go up. In the demand deposits, we're currently yielding 3.9%. The Lone Star and the FIT Investment Pools are yielding 4.85%. And we do have an investment of $3.3 million on the, as a US Treasury note, and that is currently yielding 3.01%. And that TBO will mature August 31st of this year. And last is the General Operating Fund Balance, just an update. As April 30th, the fund balance stands at $25,862,129. Again, we do have the five months of operations that still need to be recorded. We began the fiscal year with a $5,44,204 fund balance. We have transferred out $5 million that I mentioned earlier for the MFA HBAC project and $1,856,207 that have gone to the deferred maintenance projects. So again, as we're working on closing out the fiscal year, we are projecting that we will have some savings at the end of the fiscal year. And we'll bring that number in the next couple of months so that we can start preparing for the next fiscal year. Any questions?
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 7B. Approval of Microsoft Annual License Renewal, Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, College President and Administration. For the record, Albert Chavez, Associate Vice President for Information Technology. For this particular item, we're requesting approval for the expense for our annual Microsoft licensing renewal in the amount of $53,844.22. The proposed reseller is SHI Government Solutions using a DIR contract, DIRTSO 4092. The term for the renewal is July 1, 2023 through July through, sorry, June 30th, 2024. This particular service gives us access to our email hosting on the cloud, Microsoft Office 365. It also gives us access to our licensing for the operating system for the workstations, Windows 10, Windows 11, and also Microsoft Office.
Would you approve?
So I have a motion for Mr. Duncan. I have a second from Mr. Delgado and Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chavez?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been approved. Next item is 7C, Adopt a Revised Resolution Supporting BA Forwarding Corporation Application to Become a Usage-Driven Foreign Trade Zone Number 94 Designation Located at 112 Ross Clady Drive, Laredo, Texas 78045, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, we received notification from the City of Laredo. A revised letter and layout for a proposal of a submitting an FTC application for the designation of 15.53 acres of FTC on BA Forwarding Corporations Warehouse located at 112 Ross Clady Drive. The company who is requesting this is BA Forwarding. Abraham Valdez is the manager of the Forwarding Agency, submitted the letter and request through the City of Laredo. Of course, the city is, is asking for our consideration of approval of this resolution.
Now, in the past, we've only approved like a small warehouse. Here, they're asking for 15.53 acres?
Yes, ma'am.
So Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I was gonna ask the same question. We've done item or, or material or, you know, supplies or whatever they have inside the warehouse. But 15.53 acres, while it seems small in the number, that just is, sets precedence for, for others. And then you're gonna be adding and adding and adding. So like, I do have that question for Mr. Muir. When, when does it stop?
And when can we say no?
And when can we?
I can answer that one.
Madam President, if I can.
Chair recognizes Mr. Muir.
The college is under no obligation to pass this resolution. You don't have to support this. It's, these come before you as requests, as all have in the past. And I did look at the same documentation Mr. Ramos did. And just looking at, there's a picture of the, of a warehouse that is, you know, up into the right, large warehouse, up in the right of the 15.53 acre site. And then this other site that's in, it's in blue, it's like a large blue rectangle. It looks like a large space of land. And, and I wanted to know, well, this, are they going to use part of it or all of it? But the documentation does say that the idea is to have the 15.56 acres of land designated as part of this foreign trade zone. I didn't think Dr. Minita stated that. So when will it end? I mean, I have no idea. You could have others that, you know, you do have a, a large section of the community developing more and more warehouse space. I mean, this transportation industry is booming. You just, all you need to do is drive down 35 and you'll see a great deal of development on the, on the west side.
And, and, and we've had in the past several come up and request it. But like I said, it's only been a small warehouse or half of a square footage or, but here, they're asking for the whole acreage.
Well, and it appears, looking at that photo, it looks like it's not even constructed.
Yeah.
Yeah. That they're, they're, you know, perhaps build an entire warehouse that would be designated as a foreign trade zone, so.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
So if it is adopted, because there's nothing there, and let's say we give them the permission for this designation, is that indefinite? Like, are we talking about? Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't see that as fair to, to the other companies. If, but if we open the door now, we're gonna open the door for the rest of the warehouses and everything else and we depend on that revenue also, so.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado. Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
I think with regards to Mr. Ramos's question, I think with regards to this, as it is with all foreign trades on applications that have come in recently. You know, definitely voted against it or abstained from it because of the fact that we don't have complete knowledge of exactly what exactly we're losing. I've always thrown out the number that the college is always losing a million dollars every time we accept these foreign trades on applications. Of course, that number is definitely exaggerated and it's not the specific number. Of course, the inventory with regards to these foreign trade zones, it's inventory that's rendered. It's not necessarily recorded. But the number as far as on lost revenue that the college, I I guess is a part of, so to speak, is basically unknown. I don't think this is something, in my personal opinion, that the college needs to address. I think this is more for the city and for the county. Especially with the fact of that fifteen acres. Now, I will say to go back to your question. This particular request is similar to the request that was made with regards to Mr. Garanco, if I'm not mistaken, with the Old Mercy Hospital. Old Mercy Hospital Building, which they had requested the first floor of that particular building that was going to be renovated. Since there was a change in plans, they were they had to come back to the board to basically resubmit that application. So in essence, if this were to be approved, which I I would encourage everybody not to. Same situation would happen there. If there's any change in the plans, they would have to resubmit the applications and come back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ms. Ramos makes a very valid point on on setting the standard of of the of the amount of area. I I understand, you know, a small little piece, you know, or something like that. But I just think it's 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 fifteen acres is fifteen acres. It's a lot of land. I guess my question would be, is Dr. Ramita's, did you get any information? Did they reach out to you to give you any type of information? Or reasons why they're submitting this application?
No, sir. No one reached out to us. No, no one called us. No, not from the city, not from BA Forwarding, not anyway.
And and just with that, you know, if if they can't even give a a phone call to our president so she could give an explanation or actually even have a meeting, I I motion to to disapprove. Or not approve.
So I have a motion to not approve by Mr. Ranghead. I have a second by Mr. Ramos. And any further discussion? All in favor? So I have, raise your hands, make sure I know. One.
Karina? I'm voting again.
Yes, okay, so it's one, two, three, everyone, four, five, six nos and one yes. So much motion doesn't pass.
So so we are not to sign this?
Not sorry. Motion passes not to adopt.
I think six yes in one day.
Correct. Yes. Other reason. Chair recognizes Mrs. Elison.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The reason why I am not in support of not approving this is because it's important that we remember that Laredo is the biggest port of entry. And I feel that this type of initiative supports businesses, employment opportunities and contributes a lot more than we think. So for that reason, I would against not supporting this.
Thank you. So we did it correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Next items are number eight, information items. The first one is eight, A Enrollment Report. Dr. Fred Solis and Ms. Jessica Trevino.
Good evening, Madam President, President Ramirez, Administration. Fred Solis, VP for Student Success and Enrollment, accompanied by?
Good evening. Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management.
Tonight's report is going to be given the status of our current enrollment activity that we've had beginning during the summer. First of all, I'm happy to report that our May Master numbers have finally come in. Today is actually the last day of the May Master. Tomorrow, the final exams and the term will be over. But I'm happy to report that we had a nine percent increase in enrollment in the May Master over last summer. And so that's that's very good news, which will then contribute to Mr. Vela's revenue accounting when he comes back with his next report. For Summer Session One, which is due to begin on Monday, June the fifth. Currently, we're exceeding last year's number by four percent. So that's also good news in terms of our enrollment numbers there. For Summer Session Two, that session begins until July the tenth, so we still have ongoing registration. All predictions right now seem to favor to have a positive number for Summer Session Two as well. So I'll be coming back later on once the semester or the once the summer session begins with the final numbers on that. Currently, where it stands for the fall semester, we're at two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven students. When we compare where where we were last year to the to today, we're actually exceeding last year's number by seventy-eight percent. So right now, the the throttle is full throttle on the fall semester, and so we're not giving up on that. And so definitely we will continue pushing for the fall enrollment. So thanks to the all the efforts that have been instituted by the Enrollment Management staff, the Student Advising Center and so on. Everybody has been collectively coming together to work as a team and and get this going. So again, the fall semester numbers will you will continue receiving updates as between now and the start of the fall. But as of now, we're full throttle ahead. So thank you. Does anybody have any questions on those numbers?
Good job. Good job. Yay.
Next, we're gonna have some convent commencement information to relate to you as well.
Good evening again. So just a quick spring twenty twenty-three commencement recap from the ceremony that we just experienced this past May. We did have a total of a thousand fifteen students walk the stage. I'm happy to report the morning ceremony had a total of four hundred and thirty-one students. And the afternoon ceremony had a total of five hundred and eighty-four students actually cross the stage. But I also wanted to see if we can pencil already in a save the date for commencement ceremony for the summer semester. So for the summer twenty twenty-three, we are looking at Friday, August eleventh. And we are looking forward to hosting it here on campus at the Maravillo Gym. We have already done a walkthrough and we are already waiting for the production quote and everything that we want to make sure. It's also a celebration for the student. Anybody eligible to graduate in the summer, whether it's for May Master, Summer One or Summer Two, will be able to participate in this ceremony. I'm happy to report that the graduation application is already live. We have not yet promoted it and we all we already have about a hundred applications submitted for summer commencement. So we are looking forward to about four hundred graduates on average for the summer ceremony.
Very good.
Yes.
Included in there, if I may, Madam Chair. We will also have our bachelors for organizational leadership and our our ADN. We have eighty-eight? Eight V L V N, right? Vocational nurses that will be graduating in in that group as well. So they were summer graduates and and so the idea was, well, they didn't get make May and they're not gonna come back in December, I mean, or next May. So we're we're gonna try it out. We're gonna see how it works and and having an August graduation do it here on campus probably won't be as as big as we did at the arena, but it will it will mirror something to that effect. And it will be a huge celebration for our summer graduates and and future alumni. So we're very excited about that. I do wanna congratulate the Enrollment Management team. The the commencement spearheaded was spearheaded by Ms. Jessica Trevino, Ms. Raquel Peña and Mr. Salvador Sharafa. And everybody helped, everybody supported our physical plant people. Everybody pitched in, everybody did their part, our our police department, everyone was everybody's hands were on deck and it it turned out to be beautiful. I I know most of you were there. Thank you all for being there. It meant a lot to the students to have you all there. It 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 was a huge celebration and certainly for our bachelor students to set the example for our other students of what's to come for them as they continue their education. And that's the important thing. So thank you all very much. And enrollment is looking great. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a quick question, and I'm gonna recognize Mrs. Ramos as well. You said about four hundred. Will it accommodate at the Maravillo Gym?
No, so that's actually something that we are still working on to see into how many ceremonies we will break the the celebration, simply because the more students we bring in at a time, the less number of family member attendees that each graduate will have. I did have the opportunity to meet this morning with the students who are lined up to graduate from our Bachelors of Organizational Leadership. And that was one of their concerns. If it if if it is here at the Maravillo Gym, how many family members will they be able to invite? So that is something that we are taking into account and consideration as we make the decision the decision as to how to break the ceremony. So yes, and they also just FYI, they did inquire. They're very excited with the school spirit stalls, the Laredo College official stall. And they have actually inquired about our official college ring. So they are interested in 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 a college ring. So that'll be coming down the pipeline soon.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Ramos.
So the college ring, way back when they had started working on a college ring and then we stopped. And so I just wanna say thank you. I was I was very blessed and honored and fortunate to participate. I just got to participate in one of them because the the morning one I just couldn't go. But there was a real big sense of pride. People were happy. They were surprised. There were so many mixed emotions, right? Like they were so happy. None. They were sad, but sad because they finished school, right? But but I did wanna say that it'll bring back a lot of nostalgia to have it at the gym. Because I graduated at the gym. So it's like, wow. And a lot of people, a lot of us who went through it in the early nineties and graduated from Laredo Col- Laredo Junior College, and then we just walked two steps to Laredo State University. You know, it's it's gonna be really nice and they're really gonna enjoy it. And yes, your planning, you know, strategies are phenomenal. Kudos to everybody. I mean, you could see that there was just a great big sense of pride and and appreciation from the kids also as well. So we thank you and I thank you once again. And I I really am so happy that I went to one of the two graduations. And I'll try my best to go to as many as I can. Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I'm looking around. I think I'm the only one that's been here forever and ever. And but we have always had in the past, many years ago, the graduation at the Maravillo Gym. And I don't ever remember, Fred, you were here. I don't ever remember. How many graduates did we have? Well, we also lots. We also had the gym had more bleachers. Now we only have bleachers on one side. Oh. That was the other thing. It's remember that.
When we got to three ceremonies, I think that's when the decision was to move to the arena.
Yeah, we did. That was when it was showtime.
Anything else? But congratulations.
Thank you.
The great job on the graduations. I I got to attend both of them and they were really, really nice. Everybody was excited and different, but it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Glad you enjoyed it. Thank you.
Keep up the good work on enrollment.
The next one is eight B, Presentation of Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four. Student Handbooks for Division of Academic Affairs. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez De吉ina.
Maricela Rodriguez De吉ina, Purvis Vice President of Academic Affairs. So before you, we have all the program handbooks for all our our programs starting next year. As you can see, I don't wanna bombard you all with all the changes, but we have them in this document for you. Just to summarize the 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 major ones is we updated, thanks thanks to legal, we updated our Title Nine in regards to a pregnancy statement. So now we're up to part with the new changes that happened with Title Nine. We added artificial intelligence to our syllabus and to our handbooks in regards to the college stance on it. And we're going to embrace it. However, students have to recognize it. APA and MLA already came up with the appropriate citations for such resources. So we're gonna e- embrace the new era of technology that and we didn't put ChatGPT because, you know, at this point, so many so many people are coming or so many companies are coming up with their own version of AI. So so we just kept it with AI. Dr. Minita, she sent us an email. I think it was yesterday or two days ago on Governor Abbott's new statements. He it was indicated to end any COVID mandates and restrictions. We don't have any mandates or restrictions at this point. We do have some COVID statements. So I'll confirm it with Rusty to make sure we're not in any violation that Governor Abbott just disclosed about two days ago. And I think that's that's about it. We are deleting the nursing assistant program and the occupational therapy assistant program handbooks.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Next item is eight C, Gifts, Donations, Grants and Endowments Report, Masara Icompa and Mr. Gabriel Lozano.
Madam Chair, members of the board, again, Gabriel Lozano. For the record, Director of Grants. Just wondered, I believe you all have in your packets a listing that I put together. The sections are highlighted in yellow. So what it is, is basically a synopsis or, you know, update of the grants that have been submitted through the Grant Development Office that have been awarded. Now, some of these grants have been assisted by certain departments. And some haven't, right? Some are exclusively under our under our area, but the the common thing is that they all get submitted through the Grant Development Office. So we can keep track of what we have pending and and the ones that are successful, the ones that aren't. So up to between in this fiscal year, beginning nine one, twenty twenty-two. Up until now, June first, we have been awarded a total of six million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. That's a combination of federal, state and private foundation and corporate grants.
That's wonderful.
And I marked after meeting with Dr. Ramirez and kind of going over it, I marked with N and R, the new ones and the and the R would be the ones that we get. Yeah. And those, the the biggest ones there, if you look under the State of Texas section, are our Adult Education and Literacy, which is a huge grant that I think, I don't know if Sandra's here, but I think it's a five-year grant. So we we do it, you know, every five years and then they award it every year. So it's really a big total, but then they break it down by year for us. And in there also is or are the two grants that were announced today, one by me and one by Dr. Rodriguez for the OER.
That's wonderful.
Very good.
Thank you. And if y'all have any questions, you know, feel free to contact me and send me an email or or any opportunities also.
Oh, thank you.
Opportunities important. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Dr. Ramirez?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible to put some of this information on the website as? Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I should have that.
I think it's the same thing you're about to ask. We just added some of the awarded grants. So they're on the website. If you look under Grad Announcements.
Okay.
We're still learning the system, so I've only put three, but I wanna put all of them eventually.
I was gonna say that.
And what we did is we put the amount and then a little tab that says view more, and then you click on there. And then it opens like a little narrative that we put together for each for each one. But like I said, we already have three so far. It's kind of like a pilot. Trying to see if it if it works, if it works, how it looks, you know, user friendly and.
May I offer a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Canva is great for putting like, you know, like making either a video or individuals. So canva dot com, you go to the website and you can register utilizing. Or individuals. So canva dot com, you go to the website and you can register um utilizing, you know, either education. But you're able to come up with different uh templates.
Okay.
And you can either do a video or you can do individual, or you could do flyers. Kind of sort of works by helping, you know, the marketing, but you, it it's really simple and easy to use. And if you need any help or any assistance, I'd be glad to, you know, lend a hand.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, just know that these are not all the grants that was that were submitted through the Grants Office. They submitted and and through the departments because the department submitted grant, these are just the grants that were awarded. Because throughout the year, um depart- different departments, different uh academic programs. Are are looking for opportunities to support their endeavors, and so they're always looking for ways. Uh we do try to submit and and it's it's now a mandate, all grants have to go through. Uh Mr. Lozano's office before they get submitted so that he can review them, make sure that they meet all the grant requirements. And then they get submitted. And then that way, we have the appropriate tracking. Uh and so congratulations to him and Dr. Ortiz, uh who have been working really hard at at some of these grants and. I I think it's important to note that uh the who which are the new grants and which are the renewal grants. And so I think that's that's hugely important. Um I do, I know that Ms. Pompas here, um you also have the for you and and. The, there's a a summary, I wanted to give you all a summary of what happened with the gala before she gives her her quarterly report, but. Um so at the end of, at least so far, uh at the end of of the day, our our. Our revenue uh for. Every, just the gala, not the auction, but just the gala was a hundred and forty six thousand, two hundred and thirty uh dollars. Uh the auction items revenue uh is sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety seven dollars. And then our expenses were about thirty thousand, eighteen. And so um at the end of the day, you know, there's a, there's about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar Monday.
Are you on eight D?
Yes, it's the same one.
No, but I need to finish eight C.
That's this is. This is gifts and donations. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't realize that was separate. Okay, sorry, Sara. Okay.
I can feel Rusty.
So we made a hundred, a hundred and sixty one?
Hundred and sixteen. That's anyway, so um Ms. I guess Ms. Pompas can do her quarterly reports. Sorry, I thought it was all one item.
No, they they separated.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board um and Administration. Just to provide you with a brief uh recap of the monies that came in for first quarter of twenty twenty three. Uh we have a subtotal of six hundred and thirty four thousand, seven hundred and forty seven. This includes um and Dr. Ramirez had already mentioned that. The monies that came in for the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration, table sponsorships, and of course, auction items. It also includes uh some grants or some monies that came in from AEP and South Texas Outreach, both of these for scholarship purposes. And that's uh those total eighty five thousand dollars. Uh we also have uh some monies that collectively came in for scholarship and for the president's meet and greet. And so our grand total again is six hundred and thirty four thousand, seven hundred and forty seven.
Awesome.
Very good.
Very good.
Uh is there a possibility on next report, you can report the endowment?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Because I know we have several endowments.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh what the, what's the value on it? And if you can report how much we give on a yearly basis, if we do?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I really. Chair recognizes Mrs. Vella.
I like who Gabriel did too, where you do the the renewal, you know, and then the new ones. That would be nice to know who is new. Which ones are.
On the endowments.
And the endowments and.
Okay.
I liked it, Gabriel.
This is very good. Thank you.
It is very.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good.
Uh okay, the next is.
Eight D.
Eight D, Laredo College Seventy-Fifth Gala Report, Dr. Ramirez.
Okay, and and now I I need to give you the the real, the final total. So uh if you add up the one forty six, two thirty, plus the sixteen thousand, nine ninety seven. That totals a hundred and sixty three thousand, two hundred and twenty seven dollars in revenue. And minus our our thirty thousand, eighteen dollars and three cents in expenses. That gives us a hundred and thirty three thousand, two hundred and eight ninety seven for our final number for the gala. So I think I I wanted to to. Put some finality to that and um so we're, you know, we're looking at. Uh as we go through the budget process, what what is going to be the best place to put this unrestricted money?
It's a nice little kitty.
To, to make a difference, right? And so uh. It it while it may not, while it may not build a building, but it certainly could help um in in. In so many ways for for so many different things. And so um. That's a, that's a nice profit on the gala for those of us that have been working gales a long time. Uh you don't usually make that much on a gala, so.
That was very good.
It's a nice little kitty. I like that.
Everybody that I've talked to has reported it was a very nice event, very well uh coordinated, very well attended. So thank you to everybody that uh worked on it. And it was a lot of hard work that went into it, but we appreciate it. And you can tell how much money we we were able to make. So thank you.
That's very good.
Next item is eight E, Laredo College Strategic Plan and Master Plan Update, Dr. David Ariasola. Dr. Veronica Martinez and Mr. Cesar Vella.
Good evening, uh Members of the Board. Dr. Ramirez, I'm David Arasola. I am the Vice President of Compliance and Risk Management here at the College. Uh will be presented today with.
Good evening, Dr. Veronica Martinez, AVP for Finance and I'm sorry. Yeah, I was. Planning and institutional.
Uh Cesar Vella, VP of Finance and Administration.
So this is a a topic that we have brought up a couple times, um you know, during my other presentations, but. I I think we're we're in a place where we're ready to start doing some uh real planning for our next strategic plan. Uh so planning to plan, if you will, right? Some of you, uh some of the of our board was uh here when we did our last strategic panel, it was around uh April of twenty sixteen. Uh where we had meetings with external stakeholders and internal stakeholders. And uh we got their input and um from that we created a a plan that went from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three. So uh twenty twenty three is is now, um it ends in December, right? And so we want to uh construct a new plan, um you know, with uh Dr. Ramirez's vision. That'll start in twenty twenty four and take us through the the twenty twenty nine, right? So. If if you're not familiar with strategic plans, as all a strategic plan is a very disciplined effort to. Create a plan that'll funnel all our decisions. So every decision that we make, whether it's budget, whether it's programs, uh whether it's uh services. All have to be based on that strategic plan or or founded in that stra- strategic plan. So we have to consider a lot of things, right? How the community is changing around us, maybe even beyond that, how the world is changing around us, how the state. Is making uh changes to legislature and and so on and so forth, right? So when we construct this plan, we'll, I don't have what I've got, I'm gonna get into some of the later slides. So uh when we construct this plan, we want to get input from our community. And we want to use that to create our mission, vision and uh core values. When we did this last time, some things have changed. We didn't have bachelor's degrees uh a few years ago. Um we, I know Dr. Ramirez has emphasized that uh she wants our mission statement to emphasize that we're a Hispanic-serving institution. That wasn't, that wasn't there in our current uh mission statement. So those are all things that we want to consider as we go through. The next few months of constructing the plan, but I don't know if you want to.
So as Dr. Arisola mentioned, it has to be a deliberate and a very structured process. And so if you were involved last time, we took about seven months for the whole review and and getting to the final project. So we estimated about another seven months. So beginning in June, we are conducting an evaluation of our strategic plan that is ending in twenty twenty three. And see what did we meet, what didn't we meet, what what is still relevant? And so we're doing, we're conducting that evaluation now. In July, we're hoping to finalize our list of external stakeholders. We have a, we had a very successful strategic planning process last time where we included uh students, a lot of students participated. Staff, faculty, external stakeholders. So we had a lot of participation. And that is the essence of the strategic plan because we're gonna make sure that we hear from everybody that benefits or that uses the college services. So that's our plan for July. An environmental scan consisting of a SWOT analysis will be conducted in August. And then so then we'll be ready by September to host the external uh stakeholders meetings. So last time we met with students at the high schools, we brought in students as focus groups. We met, we had a um strategic planning meeting at the Falcon um bank on McPherson. So that was very well attended. And then we had an internal meeting and and that's where we planted in October of stakeholders internally. So our faculty, our staff, our external uh entities that are here on campus. Uh so all our college leadership was involved in that. And then we will be prepared in November to review all that data, finalize a plan. And so our plan, our current plan ends at the end of the year, we'll be ready to finalize the new plan. Uh based on all this feedback and moving forward with upcoming, you know, factors that may affect us, you know, statewide, nationwide. And then we we're hoping to have the final plan by December.
Well, we really need the board's help or how the board will be involved in these uh in this process will be in in the two big meetings. So we have several mini internal meetings, but we have two major. And and to call it meetings is probably understating, they're they're really gonna be more workshops uh uh than anything else. But we'll have an external stakeholder meeting where we'll ask, I know Dr. Ramirez and I have already worked on a preliminary list, but we'll ask you for input. On who we need to include from the community in this meeting, right? So um anyone who you can think of that has a vested interest in the college or wants to be part of the college's future. Or um, you know, we want them here, we want them to help us craft our our vision for the next five years. And and the same thing goes for the internal meeting. Uh I think that's where we 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 had a lot of participation from the board the last time. So this, the internal meeting is a again, a large group. Usually we have uh tables set up where we'll sit a student. A faculty member, a staff member, a board member, an administrator, all on one in one table to have conversations about the college's future. So we'll ask you to participate in that as well. So um we we have to be mindful of the open meetings act or Rusty. Um so we'll we'll have to figure out how we're going to tackle that, but um we will ask for for your participation, especially. Obviously, you're welcome to come in at any meeting, but especially in those two meetings, we'll expect a a little bit of an active participation on your part.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I'm sorry. I I just wanted to add, I I I participated in one of them and I found that there was a wide array of individuals from across the community. That opened my eyes because when I was seeing how they were all coming together. And then the vision and the mission and the goals that we had established, we went, I believe, from fifteen uh goals and then we we went down to five.
Four.
Right to four.
Yeah.
And so that opportunity provided a wealth of information for not only myself, but all the rest of the participants. So definitely, I think uh I I believe it's Ms. Vella and myself that and Judge. So we'd be the only ones that had already experienced that before. So uh it's gonna be a great opportunity for the rest of the board members to experience that.
Yeah, I I did.
Yeah, we all went.
Well, I've worked on it before.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
As a faculty.
So anyone else?
And those conversations are very important, especially since, you know, we hardly ever get a chance to put together those uh very important groups. Students, faculty, administration, external, and of course, board members. So our objective with the planning process is we want to make sure that we have a structured process. But we also want to have a feedback from everybody so that we can have a very strong mission, vision and values. Revisit the ones we have. And as you mentioned, Ms. Ramos, we went from a broad number of of goals. That are sometimes too hard to measure because there's too many. So we had concise, uh the based on conversation, so we had concise goals, very strategic goals. So we went from uh fifteen to four. And so we want to revisit that. Is it still, are those still viable? Do we have to modify them? And then also identify, how are we gonna measure them? Because the data is gonna be very important. And so part of the discussion will be not only what goals do we want to pursue, but how are we gonna measure so that we can have data-driven decisions made from that? Now, Mr. Vella.
So so along with the strategic plan, uh we also uh will start uh work with the Facilities Master Plan, uh uh. That might. Uh our current uh, our current Facilities Master Plan is uh reaching fifteen years. Uh the the current Facilities Master Plan that we have uh was developed back in two thousand nine, so it'll be fifteen years uh next year. Uh prior to that, uh yeah, the Facilities Master Plan also uh was for fifteen years. It was back in nineteen ninety five uh when uh was developed. Uh and then in two thousand nine, we uh developed the current Facilities Master Plan. So uh. The Facilities Master Plan, uh the purpose is to again establish a framework for orderly growth and development of capital improvements on both campuses here. Uh Facilities Master Plan should be responsive uh to uh current and projected needs of the college. And should be sufficiently flexible to accommodate changes that can be expected to occur. So again, uh this plan should be uh for the next fifteen years. Uh and again, it needs to align uh with the strategic plan that will be in development. So uh on your screen, you have a timeline. Um our goal is to uh issue out a request for qualifications. To hire an architecture firm that has experience in developing uh master plans uh uh for higher education institutions. Specifically commi- uh colleges, community colleges. Uh so our projections are that we'll be issuing out a an RFQ uh in Sep- on September the fourth of this year. We do have projected that the uh deadline for those uh proposals to be received uh at the end of the month in September. Uh and then uh we will be making a selection of the qualified respondents uh sometime in October. We are gonna ask uh uh board members uh to assist us with that process. So again, as as uh Dr. Ariasola mentioned on the strategic plan inside. We're asking the board to participate. We'll also be asking the board to participate in the selection process, uh evaluation and selection process. Of the architectural firms uh that will be assisting us with the Facilities Master Plan. Um and I go uh uh as we go through that review process, uh we are hoping to have a contract ready to go on October thirty first of twenty twenty three. Uh so that we can begin work on the Facilities Master Plan. Uh some of the objectives or deliverables uh of the Facilities Master Plan is to have a a plan. For the Fort MacIntosh's South Campus uh vision for the next twenty years, uh with specifics on the next five years. Uh we want to do as part of the Facilities Master Plan to have a building assessment conducted. Uh as for building and land use program uh to be developed. Uh one of our priorities will be the preservation. One of our priorities will be the preservation of historically significant facilities here at the, primarily here at the Fort MacIntosh Campus. Any buildings that are considered historically, historical, but are not, are not economically feasible to maintain for us to have a plan for consideration of demolition of those buildings. Obviously, also included as part of one of the deliverables is to look at traffic and circulation paths both here at the Fort MacIntosh and South Campuses. Have a sustainability plan as part of this, as part of the plan that we're currently finishing this last, next fiscal year. We have done major improvements when it comes to consumption of electricity. So we're looking now at having a plan that will have sustainable landscape guidelines to help us conserve water usage. Also, part of the plan, we're looking at having a utility master plan. We've done some work as part of this, of this facilities master plan on replacing water lines and storm drainage lines. So we do know that we still have work to do on that side, so that this plan has to address that. Obviously, security, technology, want to make sure that that's included in the plan as well as have a deferred maintenance plan be part of this, the objectives of the, of the facilities master plan. And finally, also having a financing and budget plan for the next five to fifteen years as we address the, the facilities master plan. So what, as I mentioned, this plan will be connected to the strategic plan. As you saw on the timeline presented by Dr. Martinez, they are planning or we are planning to have a finalized strategic plan at the end of this year, December 2023. So this lines up perfectly with the facilities master plan. We'll have already an architecture firm under contracts to start work on the facilities master plan. Again, this is, this is right now the preliminary plan to start working on the next facilities master plan for the next fifteen years. Any questions on?
No. Thank you. And as board members, we will make ourselves available to you to participate in whatever that you need from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is number nine, executive session. We have several items. There'll be nine, eight, closed session discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 to discuss recommendations for the non-renewal of employment contract of a Laredo College faculty member under board policy DMAV local term contracts, non-renewal and related legal issues. Nine B, closed session discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 with Laredo College Attorney concerning litigations instituted against Laredo College. Nine C is closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074 regarding the amendment of the Laredo College President Evaluation Timeline and adoption of the evaluation instrument for the annual evaluation of the Laredo College President pursuant to Laredo College Board Policy BFE Local Chief Executive Officer Evaluation. So at, at the, but this time I'm going to recommend we go into executive session. I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos and I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the time is now 8:08 and the board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to discuss agenda items nine A, nine B and nine C. Thank you.
All right.
Here. We're reconvening from closed session. The time is now eight forty-five and the board took no action and executive session. Will take appropriate action on items if necessary as discussed in closed session. So number ten, discussion and possible action, ten A, non-renewal of employment contract of a Laredo College faculty member. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was waiting for the.
The chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Sorry, I move that we not the I'm open for the non-renewal of employment contract of a Laredo College faculty member as discussed in executive session.
So I have a motion, have a second by Mr. Delgado and Ms. Vela. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ten B is litigation instituted against Laredo College. Ten B one approve. Oh, no, we gotta do the ten B first.
No, no, it's ten B one is together with me.
Okay, ten B one approve retention of counsel by Laredo College ensure liberty mutual for pending litigation.
Madam Chair.
So the chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the retention of counsel by Laredo Colleges ensure liberty mutual for pending in litigation as discussed in executive session.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion?
No.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Next item is ten C, amendment of the Laredo College President Evaluation Timeline and Adoption of the Evaluation Instrument for the Annual Evaluation of the Laredo College President. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the amendment of the Laredo College President Evaluation Timeline and Adoption of the Evaluation Instrument for the Annual Evaluation of the College, Laredo College President as discussed in executive session.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is eleven Presidents' Remarks, eleven eight campus police, personnel, and travel reports. Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Just your campus police report is in your packet, so I'm not going to go over that. There were just a few little minor things that happened. Nothing urgent or critical, fortunately for us. Under personnel, you met all of our new, our new personnel already and under travel reports this month was, there was no. There was hardly any travel by almost anyone because we had so many events and so many things going on that I didn't spend any time in, in very little. I only went to Austin once and so. Other than that, it was, it was light for pretty much everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Eleven B Presidents' Remarks, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Board members, just as we close the legislative session, I think it's important for, I tried to keep you all. In the know of what was going on. Our finance bill is sitting on the governor's desk for signature. We have not yet heard when he plans to sign it, if he plans to sign it or not. We do know that, that well, all indications are is that he will not veto it. So whether he signs it or not, it will become law. We're hoping that he does. Sign it soon and, and there may be an opportunity for us to participate in the signing. So we're, we're hoping for more information next week. Also, we are, there are lots of other pieces of legislation that passed that are going to affect. Some of the things that, some of the way we, some of the ways that we operate to affect DEI for sure. There were some minor changes to tenure from the, the. One of the houses, the house actually watered down the Senate bill, but it's still, it's still passed. There is a possibility that there may be in another. Special session in which more meat may be put into that as part of a different bill. And so we're still flushing out all of the new bills that passed as they relate to our ongoing teaching and learning and some of the. The big key thing to probably come up in the next legislative session will, will revolve around transgender students. And, and their participation in, in, in athletic events and things like that for us, it, it won't. It won't affect us, but certainly there, there is talk about adding on other things to those bills and so. Ms. Vela has done an incredible job keeping most of us informed as to what she knows and at the same time. I think TAC has done a great job in keeping us in the loop of what's happening and, and participating in that process. And so I'll keep you all informed as that, as that unfolds. Our, this week we had our Law Enforcement Academy graduation and for those of you that came, thank you very much. It was an incredible, incredible event. We're real proud of Chief Hale because not only is he still leading that program, but he is also. Our interim chief and, and has helped us in that process a great deal. Later, at that morning, we had our Memorial Day event and I want to, I really want to thank. Mr. Albert Hernandez and Ms. Jessica Trevino for. Putting that together. I know that Mr. Carmelino Castillo and his team also helped and supported that event a great deal and so thank you to them for, for helping us. This event turned out to be very well attended. It was a lot bigger than it's been in the past and, and so we're really grateful to them. One of my goals was to really start to make our veteran students and veterans programs more visible on campus. And I knew that by putting Mr. Albert Hernandez. In that position, he would definitely do that being a veteran himself and taking pride in that. In those initiatives and so it was evident in that. In that culminating event for this academic year and so I'm real, we're real proud of him and, and the work that that team is doing. Today we had a, a wonderful event. We signed another memorandum of understanding with another university and it was Texas Women's University. Their chancellor slash president was here with their executive team and. Dr. Marisa LaTijerina and, and Dr. Horacio Salinas and, and Dean Ediberto Hernandez worked on putting together that MOU with, with our leadership team. And it really was a phone call. Their provost, associate provost called me one day. We've been in a fellowship together and said I, we need to sign an MOU and I said, okay, let's sign an MOU. And so, you know, then the conversations began and. And here we are and there are a couple of things that I want to point out different from this. Agreement than we have with some of the other agreements. All of them, all of our university partners have promised. A last dollar tuition and fees. And which means that our students won't have to pay tuition and fees, assuming that they're Pell Grant recipients. And so, but the difference with the Texas, Texas Women's University is. Out of a brief conversation came out, they're going to honor. We're going to select one employee a year. Who wishes to go through either a master's program or a PhD program and they will pay the tuition and fees for that employee. And so they're going to scholarship them and for our employees, that's a huge, huge opportunity. And so we're real grateful to our partners at Texas Women's University and, and to our friends that, that made the trip down here. It was an incredible, incredible experience today with them and, and I know that that partnership is going to flourish. For our bachelor students, if they decide to, to participate in a master's or PhD program. They can also submit for scholarship and grant, grants with Texas Women's University and so they will. They will give certain. I don't know, favorite, I don't want to say favoritism, but certainly will, will honor our, our partnership and so I think that, that will set us. Aside with them and so we're real grateful to them. All of our graduation and pending ceremonies this year turned out great and I, you know, you, you, all the other things that, that we celebrated tonight are, are. Not by accident and you all know this, but I must say that. There is a huge, huge machine that is working every day and our, our leadership team, our administrative team. Our mid level managers are really pushing hard and. It's, it's, we, you know, these, these folks don't go home early. They, they stay late. They, they come in on Saturdays. They come in on Sundays and. I think everybody is committed to this transformation of Laredo College and I'm, I'm really proud and grateful of, of all of them. And last but not least, one of our, our big. Goals this year was to provide free meals and to our students and I know that. Carmelino was leading that charge and when I gave it to him, he thought I was crazy and. And Mr. Castillo was able to, to look for the software and I kept insisting that it was there and Albert Chavez helped him and they found all that. And, and by the time we were able to make it work, we started giving. Free meals, I guess it was March fifth, right? Something like that. And Sasa kept saying, hurry up, we have to spend this money and so it, it was, it was a huge effort and. From one day to the next, it made a huge impact on our students and what that tells us is the number of students that don't eat. And that's a shame. And so with the money we had left over, that no cost extension is going to be huge for our students because we're going to continue to provide. What we're supporting and what we're saying is if you enroll full time, you get a free meal plan. And so the idea is to have completers. We want people to finish the semester and we want them to graduate quickly. And, and move on to the next phase of their life, whatever that might be. And so I'm, I'm grateful to, to this incredible team and, and to all of you for the opportunity to continue to work here and to serve. Our community. So thank you all very much for your patience and your support.
Thank you.
I just have a comment on, and that was, we heard about it during the cadets' graduation. To look into if we can assist the cadets as well. I, for the free meals, because one of the comments that was made was that some of the cadets sometimes don't bring. They don't have money or they can't afford to buy food. So I don't know.
From the police academy?
Yes.
Yes, remember that when we spoke to them after, they said, when you all started offering the free meals, we started going to eat over in the cafeteria. Because they were included. Yes, they were included. Yeah, they were, they were and, and it, it made all the difference.
Oh, yes. I see them there.
Yeah, and so they, they are included because they're enrolled full time.
Okay.
So.
Thank you and thank you everybody for everything that you continue doing to take our college to the next level and taking care of our students. We really appreciate it as, as a whole, as a board. Number twelve. Next meeting date, Saturday, June third, twenty twenty-three at nine AM. Board budget workshop. Number thirteen, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still not.
So I have a motion by Ms. Ryan Hale. I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Don't everybody need take a piece of cake?